This conference will now be recorded.
Roll call Shannon.
Mayor Trujillo.
Here.
Commissioner Campos.
Here.
Mr. Gandy.
Here.
Mr. Butcher.
Here.
Mr. Bolt.
Here.
Mr. Bolt will lead us in prayer and pledge.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you for everything you do, giving us guidance on a daily basis so that we hopefully make right decisions in our lives. Thank you for watching over us during trying times as we move forward through obstacles in our path. Thank you for allowing us to see things like birth of the newborn baby, sunsets in New Mexico, or even better, the smiles on loved ones' faces, which wouldn't be possible not for you. Dear Lord, we pray that we can be good public stewards and then we can pass on your word, the word of the Lord, in God's name, amen.
I believe this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under all, individual liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among the underdogs.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda amendment or removal of Resolution 2021-060 Wood and 061, approval of the Troy Harris Building RFP. Second that. Motion was made to remove Resolution 2021-061 and second by Commissioner Bernard during the discussion. There's no discussion, roll call Shannon.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Bolt.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo.
Yes.
Go ahead, another motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to set the rate for the minutes, regular minutes of July 26, 2021, and the special minutes of July 30, 2021.
Motion was made by Mr. Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bolt, during the discussion. There's no discussion, go call Shannon.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo.
Yeah.
Moving on to Commissioner Stafford's report. Shannon.
Yes, I wanted to bring up something about redistricting before the municipal officer election that will take place in March. And the law does require that we redistrict when the census comes out, which is supposed to be coming out this week, my understanding. And we will be looking into that. I've talked to Michael Sharp at Research and Polling, and he would do that work for us. It's at a maximum cost of $20,000, but there, it just depends on how much you want to go into it, just to satisfy the state's requirements. It would be significantly less than that, but it is the law that we have to do that now.
Shannon, will this new district take place prior to the election? So by law, it has to take prior to the election. So the two commissioners plus the judge of citywide, so they would have the new district gone out for them prior to their election?
Not necessarily. If there's a difference of 5% either way, then they have to look at redrawing those lines. And that would be something that Research and Polling would be doing for us.
Because I think it would be fair for the two commissioners that are running for reelection to have that in front of them way in advance, so they know what their new district is.
And it might not even happen, it's depending on our population shift, you know, that's something that I'd have to look into.
When will we know? I just say it would be fair to our two commissioners that.
Well, as soon as we can move on, he said that he could speak to us remotely at our next meeting, because on his end, just have a better idea of what we need to be doing. And I think it would go for y'all to vote on whatever the plan was that we decided on with him.
So would be ideal to put it on a discussion item?
Yeah, yes, that's what he suggested. And that way, he could have a presentation for y'all to think about, so he'd know more of what's going on.
And if he can ask them to get a time frame as well, we guess, if it's a week or a six weeks due.
Well, I think, I don't know, it would be in ordinance, that go about ordinance.
If we were going to redistrict, and to space the line, you know.
So it's been taking a long year, six days, by the time the discussion they're at, it'll be six days.
Yeah, we need to move on fairly quickly. It has to be done by the end of the year, so. And like you said, the sooner we can get it done, better.
During the discussion on the board. So I wouldn't vote for being notified, if, let's pretend that the districts were changed for whatever reason, would the vote be notified through mail, or would that just be something that was put out? That's probably a question for another time.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Is it public, is it lack of public hearing for the ordinance to pass?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you have anything, Commissioner Campos?
No, I think I'm good, thank you.
Moving on to Commissioner Dog.
All I have is that I have submitted the DFA report for the fourth quarter and for the final 2021-722 budget to DFA, so I'm just waiting for their approval. So hopefully this time, sometime the next two, three weeks, I'll get the approval. That's all I have.
Senator, discussion for Dog. Moving on to Chief Zar.
I want to follow up a little bit on what I mentioned last week about the COVID, or the last commission meeting about COVID numbers coming up. Norley did a press conference this afternoon about four o'clock, and the case counts that we're seeing were a little bit undercounted. The four to five weeks ago, we were seeing one case per day roughly, and then now, three weeks ago, we were looking at 26 cases per day. Now, this last week, we've had 50 cases per day with 102 on last Tuesday from COVID-19. They are offering testing at the hospital Monday through Friday, eight to eight, and then as well as August 12, doing a vaccination clinic at the event center. So they're trying to get the vaccinations out, and they're trying to get more testing done, and so if you start having symptoms, to definitely go out to the hospital and get tested. So that's pretty much the update on the COVID stuff, but we are seeing an increase in case counts, and a big problem right now for the hospital, we're having a hard time to transfer out patients that are COVID positive. So a lot of the area facilities have been full, we had to transport one all the way to Colorado this last weekend, so that's starting to increase, so we'll be keeping an eye on that on our end as well.
Can you also elaborate on what you instructed staff to do?
So currently, right now, we're following CDC guidelines. Any public areas within facilities, the employees are asked to wear a mask. When dealing with the public, but if they're in their offices or anything like that, by themselves or within that six feet, they're able to work without masks. But as far as interaction with the public, we're requiring our employees to have masks.
Senator, questions by the board? Of course, we have a capacity.
According to what the hospital, they're all full, right?
They are completely full. Any area hospital is maxed as well. They are shutting down services to accommodate for additional beds. They are, like Chief Zar mentioned, they are having to ship people all the way to Denver, because everybody around here is just maxed. Everybody's maxed. So.
Shannon, any other questions for Chief? Moving on to Commissioner Bolt. Thanks. Commissioner Bernard.
Yeah, I guess my concern is for Mr. White, he's chief of the district, and I know as soon as we start actually doing the work at the parks today around the the disco deals and the covered areas we eat around him and all that good stuff, it hasn't been done, and then my concern was, you know, that we won't do everything, and I know everybody says, you know, shorthand, but you know, that's still no excuse, you know. But, and then my concern is down industrial by the waste treatment plant. Try to take care of that too.
Find that for you, understandably better, but I'll let you know.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Commissioner. Also, I wanted to mention to the board of commissioners, I'd like to set up a work session for us this coming month of September. Outside of the operations of City Manager, there's others items that we as commissioners have, have that need to be more knowledgeable, what's taking place, and I feel that a special meeting would be ideal for that. That way, you can ask questions, get more insight of what is taking place. City Manager pretty much does day-to-day operations, but we, as board of commissioners, are involved in other aspects of the direction the city is undertaking currently and the new direction that we are undertaking, as we are currently doing right now. And I'd like to have a work session that involves questions and also involves topics, or any topic you may want to add to that work session to get a better understanding, or Mr. Dog, Attorney Dog, as David and Senator Board, would like to better inform the board of what is actually taking place right now. But like I said, there's a few items, like I would say our injection well and our lease properties and so forth, I'd like to get a better understanding of what we stood. And then get a clear picture of where we are financially, that way we can make better decisions in the coming months as a board. We'll send text or email out there, see what the best state in the evening, maybe in the evening, some of us work during the day, so they have to get in the evening, but most likely, it's about a two hour, two hour shortcut. And then like I said, any items you want to add to this opportunity to get a better understanding of where we stand as a city. I think it'd be beneficial to all of us to be on the same page and have a little debate on how we feel that the city needs to go ahead. Commissioner Gandy? Shannon?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Any questions for Gandy? Chief?
Just a couple of things. Earlier today, we met with Mr. Ortega with Constructors Incorporated. They will be starting on the Main Street project on the 18th. They will be starting with the retention pond, which is approximately 10 acres for the pond itself. They will do that, and then they will start heading west on Avenue D. So they get to Main and D, and then it'll start at Avenue F, north to Jefferson Street. That is the whole area of what they're looking to do, but I will give with the auxiliary agencies to assist us with notifying those businesses. Mr. Ortega wants to have a meeting that day as well, on the 18th, with those businesses. That way, they have ample notice as to when it's possibly going to affect those areas. So we're going to give life to them to reach out to their members and the people on those districts that's going to affect to be at that meeting, so they could be informed directly through constructors.
Shannon, can you set that up also as an acropassion, in case we have three or one, or two?
Yes.
And then the other thing is, yeah, there's, some of the facilities are getting mowed and stuff like that. We are, myself and the fire chief were, I was out there Wednesday, and I was out there Friday at mowing and edging both. There's a lot of facilities that still haven't been done, so we started working on them. I'll be back out this weekend to do some more of those as well, so we'll get there. Other than that, that's it, that's all I have.
Any questions for Chief? Moving on to area, do you know?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that Chief Zar, Chief, Robby was were out there buying the rest, I did buy him. Chief, I always wondered, how are we staffing the department? Are we still pretty well down for officers?
Correct. I had another one that notified us last week that he has applied at another location as well. So yes, we are at extreme, extremely critical staffing. We do have two non-certifieds, but it's going to take us at least a year to get them up to par, if anything.
I think that was going back to next month's. Me and I wanted to schedule, I think, to give us Chief, Robby, to give us full detail of updating on his department during that court session, that way we have a better understanding of the direction that we will be in this year. Senator, more discussion for Dave?
I did forget one thing. I did reach out to a couple of the headhunting companies to get an approximate, they won't give you an approximate price of what it's going to cost, but they'll give you a range to hire, or for them to go out and solicit somebody for the department, or for the city. They will charge anywhere from 15% to 25% of that first year's salary, so it depends on what the starting salary is going to be. It's what they charge. So whatever the commission, I'll get you some actual names that are actually in the area of people that are wanting to do that kind of service, and I will bring them back to the commission to decide what direction they want to go in.
Senator, questions by the board? City Attorney, back to the man.
Nothing new to report, thanks.
Senator, questions for that? Is there?
You forgot Paul.
Oh, oh, Commissioner Paul.
Yeah, you must be getting old, Mayor, I understand.
And you know what I'm saying about you, he's asking questions.
Yeah, you know, just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, if I could, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
On that COVID testing, the testing that Norley is having on Thursday, 12, that's from eight o'clock till four o'clock at the event center, and it's free. So I'm not trying to tell everybody what to do, but I think that I would like to encourage everyone to get vaccinated, because I think that's one of the factors that's driving our numbers up, and they are getting pretty scary once again. And last week, the governor announced that everything is on the table again, and so we all know what that could be, so I think we just need to take better care of ourselves and kind of encourage each other to do what we think is best. I think regarding that special meeting, Mr. Mayor, you're talking about, I think it'd be a good idea to, if we have questions as commissioners, to reach out to the individual who can answer those questions either by email or phone call, and get those questions answered. And then we can bring up that discussion during a meeting, instead of having to wait for the meeting to ask the questions. I think we can run a more efficient meeting by that means. And we also need to think about now, what we can do as a city to kind of help the police department, because like the chief said, it is in critical stage, and I can understand that it is an issue that we're going to have to help resolve, and it's going to take all of us to come up with a solution. But I think, I don't think we need to wait till that meeting, I think we need to come up and brainstorm prior to that, and when we have the meeting, then we can put everything on the table and seek a resolution.
Yeah, yeah, that special meeting would be for discussion, and we could, yes, do your homework prior to the meeting, that sounds like, let's.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Okay, there's no more, moving on to public comment.
Good evening, city commissioners, mayor. I'd like to invite you guys to a couple of different events that we have coming up this week. This week, we have our off-the-clock connections, that's going to be Thursday. We're bringing in a guest speaker to share and teach us about the updates that Facebook is having, and how it's going to be affecting local businesses so that they can be ahead of the curve and better market their businesses and their services. And that's going to be this Thursday. It's open to all Levington Chamber and downtown businesses, 5:30. And then on Friday, we are going to have a ribbon cutting for our central alley, and for those of you who are unaware of where Central Alley is, it's the alley located directly behind Cornerstone. We have commissioned five graffiti murals through our grant from New Mexico True Clean and Beautify, and then we also got a grant from New Mexico Oil and Gas and the Lee County Electric to install a lighting in that back alley as well. So to show off our beautiful new little area, we're going to have a block party. We've teamed up with the Levington Chamber to have a free roller skating rink and free ice cream for families. We're also going to be having the Justin Kent Band playing, and of course, journalists will be there with their beer garden. We're really excited and we hope to see everyone there. If you can't make it on Thursday, at least stop by on Friday. And the ribbon cutting itself will actually take place at 6:00 PM. We'd love to have some city representation. Questions?
I want to thank you for putting that punch just together, Mark. Steph did review it, and they will have everything available before you come through.
Okay, thank you so much. I did see that the alley, the hole was filled, so thank you, street department. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Is there any other public comment? There's no other public comment. Moving on to discussion items. Dave?
Chief? Yes, sir. The discussion for the luggage tax, every position, all five positions on that board are up for renewal. We, I reached out to one of the members to see if he was still interested in that position, which would be Mr. Art Sanchez Jr., and he stated he was no longer interested in that position. Mr. Khalid Farouk stated that he would still continue to serve on that board, so if anybody, if you have anybody else's names that y'all want for us to reach out to, let us know if anybody's interested in that position, let us know, and we could get that hopefully in the next agenda to get those filled ASAP.
Is anybody, did you mention anybody's?
The only one that we know for sure right now is Mr. Farouk, that stated he would, he's willing to stay on.
Senator, discussion by the board? There's no discussion by the board. Moving on, tonight, motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2021-060, approval of the industrial park.
Second that. Motion was made by Mr. Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Chief?
Yes, sir. As you know, Steph went out for a potential RFP for the lease of some property that the city owns at the industrial park on south, south of Levington. We went out for that RFP, we only had one response come back from Laugh, Callan Renewables. They are interested in leasing out right under 1,400 acres on the city's industrial park. They're looking to build a 300-megawatt solar array system. They will obviously take care of a lot of the cleaning, the surveying, and the grading, and all that kind of stuff, the fencing, they'll take care of the maintenance side of it, if the city decides to go that direction. The development, they will not exceed 1,0095 days. Once they start doing that, it'll go pretty quickly on the outside of it. Obviously, it's pending contracts from, it is pending permitting from the state of New Mexico. They can't start that until they actually have something with the city, so they can start permitting that process. They will, they're analyzing that indirect jobs will be about 30 positions to include like engineering, engineers, legal, survey, environmentalists, and other outside contracts. Directly impacted 145 to 175 local jobs, construction, electricians, installers, procurement, accounting, and any other related project positions. They're also looking at permanent positions after they start operating 20 to 25 positions, technicians, operator, operations side of it, maintenance, and the accounting side of it. They are looking at about $47,660 a month directly to the city for the lease of that, to include, they'll add a 1% annual escalator every year. They're looking at a potential of a 25-year lease with an option to renew for that itself. Yes. I just went blank on his name. Let me give you, EDC Director, give you a little bit more information on that.
Well, Commissioner, Mayor, I'd like to introduce you to Graham. Graham is part of the Lewis Callan Renewables Company. He's here for the next few days. We'll begin the process of what's the next steps. But just, but the chief is correct. They are leasing out 1,350 acres, some on the left side, some on the right side of the industrial park. They'll be creating over 200 positions over three to five years. The revenues are good for the city. Is there anything that you want to add to?
Just the fact that the job creation as well, as Chief of Police did state, we're super excited to be a part of this project with you guys, and we're ready to get it kicked off immediately, once we do that hopefully lease sign. Well, we've already been in pre-development stages, looking at consultants throughout the state locally, been in contact with engineering firms, construction companies as well, and like I said, we're incredibly excited to work with you guys, and we'd love to answer any questions that you do have.
And just to add on to what he was mentioning is that this week, we will work on a lease agreement, and the lease agreement has not been reached. There are some terms and stuff that we're not comfortable with quite yet, but we're hoping to come to some type of agreement soon. Any other questions? Also, just though I emailed. Any other questions? Also, just though I emailed some of you, some of your emails actually bounced back, but I don't know. Tomorrow we'll be hosting a kind of like a meet and greet with Luther Callan where we're allowing the electricians, engineers, surveyors, folks that are a part of our membership to come and meet with them and kind of give them rate sheets, the services that they offer. It's kind of a come and go. If you're welcome to attend, it's tomorrow, 6:30 at the Traders and it's by additional. Any questions for us? 6:30.
6:30. Apparently up here it's been good.
6:30, yes, sir. And we'll be having hors d'oeuvres and drinks as well. And you're welcome to bring your plus one.
Now, I see you're a smaller company out of Connecticut?
Correct.
Now, have you had any dealings of this area?
We have approximately 25 projects that are leased in New Mexico right now.
So as far as the people that you're going to be hiring for the job, where are they going to be coming from? I see that you're from Connecticut. Are they people you're bringing with you or what?
It'll be, it'll be a combination of both. It'll be local and our own, we have our own construction department as well within Luther Callan. They're part of our procurement and construction team. So some regional supervisors will come out this way and we will hire locally. And we already have begun to hire locally for environmental, environmental consulting needs.
I see also in the lease here, you have an option for two tenure extensions.
Correct.
Now, let's say that we go along with this and have that, how are we going to be? Is it going to be based the same, the 1% increase per year as far as out payment is going to be on that?
Correct.
20 years?
Yes, sir. Yeah. It'll be based very similarly to how it is stated there in, in the lease, so.
Okay. And I have another question. I see that 1,350 acres you're saying in here, but in here also it says minimum 500. So are we leasing 1,350 acres? That's what you're going to be leasing?
Correct. Yep, 1,350.
The total should be 1,350.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure on that because I see there was a 500 minimum.
Right.
And just so, to add on to that, they are looking to make Levington their headquarters. So we are looking for office space now. They have looked at several properties. Like he mentioned, there's 25 signed contracts, but they are expecting five additional ones. So they'll have up to 30 contracts, but Levington will be their headquarters.
Commissioner, both thoughts known because we're still working on the contract. We will, if we award the RFP tonight, we still have the contract. So some of what you brought up, bring to, to their attention a little bit based on what you said, sir.
Any other questions for us?
Do you have any other questions by the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further discussion. Roll call, old champ.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bow?
Yes.
Mr. Compost?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes. President Louie's passing. Do you have another motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2021 dash 062, approval of contract between the city of Levington and New Mexico Self-Insurance Fund.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bow. Chief?
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, this is a joint powers agreement between the city and the self-insure fund. The self-insure fund is who handles all of our workers' complaints. It's basically just a contract. They've had some change of personnel over there. So this is just updating it to agree to that JPA with them.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's, it's just updated any personnel, even everything else should still stay the same. We've been with them for a few years now, I'd say. At least the last eight that I've been with. Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call, old champ.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bow?
Yes. Yes. President Louie's passing. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2021 dash 063, street closure, block party event, Levington Main Street, Central Alley crawl.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bow.
Do you guys have any questions or concerns? Like I mentioned earlier, this is for our ribbon cutting on Central Alley. We are only asking to block off Central Street. And I do have, I did reach out to all the businesses on that block and all of them approved it. We didn't have any like pushback or anything from them. It'll start at 12 o'clock and then it'll end at midnight.
Is that going to be advertised as soon as the street closure?
As soon as it's approved by commission, we will put it out.
Is there any other discussion? There's no other discussion. Roll call, old champ.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Mr. Bow?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes. President Louie's passing. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, motion to consider accounts payable.
Motion was made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Gandy. Commissioner, Charles Doug.
If you've got any questions, just let me know.
Mr. Anthony, I got a question. New Mexico municipal league, 1,500, 850 hours for memberships. What are they looking for?
Is that the, you said 15,000? That's the city's annual contract that we have. They're the ones that lobby for the city. So they do all our lobbying up at Santa Fe during the sessions and prior to the session as well. So any issues that we have, that's what we take them to and they try to get those addressed for us. They take care of all the training for the municipal league itself as far as for the municipalities. So they help us with a lot of those leads that we don't have the staff to do.
They're also available for Commissioner, Commissioner, if he chooses to call for any type of issue they need, of course, it's acknowledged. Sorry. Sorry. Yeah, Commissioner Gandy also.
They also offer training for the commission, MOLI program is what they call it. It's, 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 it's offered through, through them.
Change healthcare?
Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, that is. Yes, sir. That's our third-party billing company.
Hey, Chief Lizardo?
Yes, sir.
I might, I might have missed it, but the change healthcare, 8,739 ambulance net collections. I don't know if you explained that already enough, but could you explain that please?
Yes, sir. That's the, our company that does our third-party billing for the ambulance service.
Okay. So that's the charge. That's what they charge us. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. They charge us a percentage of what they collect.
And how often is that charged to us?
One, once a month, we get an invoice from them based on what they, what they received from the previous month.
And what is that percentage, Chief? Do you recall?
It's about 6% if I'm not mistaken, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I see we're paying Lasco a pretty good payment.
Yeah, that was the, the finishing of our, the new fire station. We'll have one more next month and we'll be done. Yes. And Lee County Electric? Yes. For some reason, that is the norm or or that average. It's, it's average.
Hey, Mr. Dobbs?
Yes.
I just wanted to compliment you on your format. It's a lot more informative than we've had in the past. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Dobbs or Chief?
Yes, sir.
And you guys might have answered this already as well, but I noticed we're making about five payments to the New Mexico Municipal League all in, at the end of July. Was there a reason for that?
As one of them is for the city and the other ones are for the individual memberships for the, such as the police chiefs association, the fire chiefs association, the city clerk, the library and the city managers association as well. So those are separate from, those are separate charges from the actual municipal league itself.
I see. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion by the board? There's no further discussion. Roll call, old champ.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Bow?
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Mr. Compost?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes. I do find motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn?
Second, motion was made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Gandy. Is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion. Roll call, old champ.
Commissioner Bow?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes. He is adjourned.
Thank you, guys. See y'all.